Everybody ready?
Yep.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Cohasset Select Board Meeting Tuesday, August 20th. This meeting is being held at 91 Sawyer Street in Cohasset, Massachusetts, but it can be viewed on Cohasset 143 Local Cable or Facebook Live. Interested parties may also join by utilizing the Zoom link at the bottom of the agenda. Please remember that this is a meeting held in public and is not a public meeting. If you have any comments, please utilize the public comment section of the agenda. Virtual comments will be only monitored on the Zoom link. All speakers, please state your full name and address for the record. So may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Flex?
Chris Flex here.
Paul Grady present.
Ellen Mar present.
Jack Creighton present.
David Farag present.
Excellent, thank you very much. I'd like to invite everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and at this point, I would like a motion to move into executive session for exemption number three to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. The board will discuss the sewer membering replacement litigation.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We will return to public session shortly. We are back in open session, are you all set, Kevin?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so before we begin our agenda, which I just missed, please. Um, I'd like to take a minute at this time to, um, sorry, here it is. To recognize a longtime Cohasset resident and employee, Mr. Stephen Wigmore, he passed away last Friday night. Steve worked for the town of Cohasset as a full-time employee from 1967 to 1998, and then he continued to work part-time until 2020. Steve stepped down as commander of the American Legion George H. Mealy Post for the past 38 years at his last meeting, and he was a member of the post for 51 years. Services are at McNamara Sparrow Funeral Home, Friday, August 23rd, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, August 24th, 10:00 a.m. at St. Anthony's Church Cohasset will be the funeral mass followed by a burial immediately thereafter. Celebration of life at the American Legion will happen after the burial. Um, I knew Steve for a long time, I knew his son Tommy. Truly legends in Cohasset, and like just a moment of silence for Steve. Great, thank you. Okay, um, public comment. So do we have anyone here for public comment? Yes, hi, why don't you come up, please?
The microphones, I've heard from people.
Oh, I'm gonna be short.
Okay.
Not because it's long and dramatic, but. Can I pull it out, or?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I just, I can't reach it. That's fine.
All right. I think it's good.
This button?
Yeah. Is it green?
Yeah.
All right.
Now it's on, okay.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Anne Marie Young, and I live at the Preserve at Cohasset. One thing I want to apologize for, I got an email from Chris Senior. I did not realize that I wasn't supposed to email you all regarding, you know, the, I know, Paul, you would ask me to send you some pictures, and I actually have more, but you're welcome. I'm gonna, I'm continuing to work with the AG. I have a contact, so I will stop sending you stuff, I'm sure you've got your work cut out for you here. Um, my one concern tonight.
I'm gonna interrupt you for a moment, all right, Anne Marie? We will be coming out very shortly with protocols, so some of the pictures you sent are health involved, our inspector will get involved. You're gonna be hearing more as this evolves about further inspections and setting up routine. I think you guys will be happy with that, but those pictures are lifesaver. You can send them to me anytime, anytime, fine, because those are health and safety. If it's water-related, electrical.
Just to clarify, all I said to the son was that, can't answer. I said.
You can send them, we can't answer it altogether, because you're delivering.
I think I responded that to you. Yeah, it's okay, as long as it was okay to send them to you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't breaking any.
No, you didn't.
Okay, great. So my other concern, so apparently there's, you said that there's health issues. One of my concerns about the health issues is possible mold issues. And I have a picture here that shows some mold with fur. It looks like we're growing a sweater possibly, or an animal. And I wanted to know who covers that? If you've got an agency that is tone deaf to the community, who would we get to look into the fact that we might be living in a sick building or sick buildings?
Well, I would.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
No, it would, that your office, housing and is, is the go-to with, because they handle a lot of, usually apartment complexes, anything like that is, it's, you want to contact them first off. How, again, I, again, those things sometimes, Anne Marie, get out of our hands, what we can do with the health and safety and things like that, that's where we're coming into more. We'll be unveiling is we're coming into more inspections, regulated inspections. I think I'm safe to say, well, so, things that we're looking at, that we're looking at a software system that reports every vacancy, every move, not just in the preserve, but in any rental unit in Cohasset. So it's gonna turn us a little more proactive, because it's difficult to know, and we've discussed with other people observe, we're finally learning that it's broken, but if you, you can't fix something, if you don't know it's broken, you guys are stepping to the plate. And so we're trying to attack these avenues. It's a relatively fairly recent event, as you know, that things are coming up, and we're trying to hit each ball out.
I'm pleased, I'm really grateful to you guys.
I know Chris has, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, Chris does have this at the end of the agenda. So, so can we just finish, Mr. Young?
One other comment, which I actually wasn't gonna speak on, is the massive complaints about the water bill, and there's no way to make sense of the water bill between, and I know Brenda Douglas at the water department, I've sat with her many times. People's water bills are outrageous, mine isn't, I'm okay, but they don't seem to make sense. So that's another thing, and I don't know, where do we go? How do you, how do you take cubic feet and the way that the town prices out their water to a community that does it by the gallon and is not very forthright in communicating what those rates are? So that's another issue as well that I'd like to.
I believe Mr. Senior is already on that and has been working with the company, and he identified a while ago that the utility calculation on the water based on some other model community is incorrect, is that fairly accurate, or?
Yes, but not in this particular context, so, so, again, without going too deep here. So the state does allow for a pass-through, but the state has to approve the methodology. Um, we don't, right, so the challenge here is that the customer for Cohasset Water is the preserve, it's not the individual tenants. And that's the way it is in any, so, the, and that said, this, there's requirements, the state requires a certain parameters, and so the state is supposed to sign, you know, it's supposed to meet state requirements. We're not, I'm not seeing that they're doing that, I'm trying to get information, more information about how they were done, how they set this up. A lot of units, a lot of places do this, a lot of places pass through water costs. That said, there's, there are, there's literally state law that governs this.
Wow.
Whether or not they are following it, I don't know, again, it's something we've never done before, so we're trying to work with our state representative, figure it in.
Okay, I know, I don't want to spend too much time, but I would think that if an organization is, is charged a certain amount in their portion, if they get a portion, they should pay, and they pass on what ours is, that that's the way it should flow, but that's not what's happening, so. Hopefully, we can make that happen, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you want me to? Yes, yeah, okay.
Any other public comments? Nope, okay, anyone on Zoom with public comment? Okay, so we will move forward, Mr. Senior. Introduction of new employees.
It's always exciting to introduce the board new staff. We have, who do we have on right now? So we have Chase Gilisordo, Kevin Lynch, Julie Gillis, who's the assistant town planner, and we have one more officer. Well, go with what we got. So, and again, is she quickly up on the, on the screen? Okay, so, all right, so, if, can you bring up as well, we'll do Chase first. So we have three officers who have joined us in the last six months. Uh, we have more, they're heading to the cabinet, they're not officially yet, so you'll need to benefit your date, so, so. We have, can you, can you add him? He's in.
Yep. Who do you want first, Chris, Chris, Brendan, or?
I was gonna take Chase first, but Brendan's not up yet, so.
Brendan's here.
Oh, is he there?
Yep.
All right, we'll do, we had Chase before, I'll, I'll tell, we, Chase is the guy with the beard, you'll save it a second, so. Uh, Chase has joined us from Nantucket, where he was an officer. He is a graduate of the Western Mass Police Academy. Um, among, we always turn it through a little fun fact about folks, so he has a 105-pound dog named Moose. He also attended cooking class in Italy, and he loves to cook, and he's the cook for his shift dinner, which he does tonight, so. Uh, so he's, he's a very popular man, so that's Chase.
Kevin, can you promote them so we can see them?
Yeah, Chase, can you unmute? Just so you can pop up on the screen.
Sorry for that.
Hi, Chase.
Hi, how are you?
Good, welcome to Cohasset.
Welcome.
Thank you, very happy to be here.
I'm coming down for one of your dinners.
Sounds good, we gotta get him going here as well.
He's actually, he's in the command.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Chase, welcome to Cohes.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Uh, is Brendan up, can you promote Brendan?
Yes.
Uh, Brendan is a, uh, the United States Marine Corps combat vet. He received Navy Achievement Medal for his actions in the Jaffa, Iraq. Uh, he joined us in 2009, then went to the transit, and then came back. He's been with us for 2023, he's also a very avid photographer, and has an amazing photography site, so.
Yep, skip that, thank you, nice to, nice to see everybody.
Well, welcome to Cohasset, thank you for coming back.
Yeah, well, thanks for bringing me back, I appreciate it.
Welcome back, and thank you for your service, and thank you for your continued service.
Yeah, you're welcome. Brendan, uh, selectman Grady is a fellow Marine. Semper Fi.
Yeah.
Semper Fi, brother.
Is it a little different than the transit police?
Uh, it's extremely different than transit police, a little bit smaller. The waves are a little bit more, uh, they're meaningful down south of the city, so.
Yeah. What's your favorite part so far?
Um, yeah, just the way the, the community responds to the department. Uh, there's always letters and cards and thank yous, and, you know, things brought by the station, which is, uh, it's nice, it's nice to know that, you know, despite a parking ticket here or there, that, uh, you know, there's still a, a respect and a way to work together.
Great, thank you, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
I think you'll find it in Cohasset, we appreciate the hard work, and we're also, we, we've had some incidents. Uh, we're also very mindful that at any time you could round the corner, there can be a horrible situation, which will put your, yourself in jeopardy, and the town recognizes. And, uh, thank you for coming back to Cohasset.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And our third new officer introduced tonight, thank you, Brendan.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Um, is Kevin Lynch. So Kevin is a graduate of Mass Maritime, raised degree in emergency management, he's avid soccer fan and player. Uh, the, was, became a special for us in 2021, uh, and they transitioned in 2023 and just completed his academy this spring, so he's very excited. And his, uh, his fun fact is he has a koi pond, he's a big fan of koi, he's 400 koi, it must be a plenty big waha. And he buys food by the pallet, so, uh, I can't talk about Chief Willie buying lettuce by the case staff, he's big, so. A way by the pound, so maybe I'll stock our pond, maybe a few koi, so, Kevin Lynch.
Is he there?
I'm here, yes, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you, hi Kevin, welcome to Coh, welcome to Cohasset.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a favorite fish?
Koi.
Oh, yeah, no koi, but I'm your koi fish, do you have a favorite?
Uh, too many to count.
Okay, good answer. Good answer, um, anyone have any?
Well, welcome, and thank you so much.
We're happy, welcome.
Thank you.
See, as I think, everyone's got a beard.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Much better than mine.
Mine can, I say, no worries, so.
Yeah.
So thank you, Kevin, welcome, and, and again, I just, uh, so all three officers are here because of a lot of creative work that was done, and I wanted to have Chief Willie just comment on this for a second.
Yeah, I mean, I, I tried to grow a beard, and I look like I have a psychotic mange, so I, I don't, uh, I don't try that. These officers here, and the three we just brought on, are part of, you, as you know, and what I appreciate is, is the board's support and Chris's support over the last 18 months in removing ourselves from civil service, and also the union. And working with this, by coming out of civil service, it gives us much more latitude, and we can onboard these officers really quickly. We went, when we're under the civil service system, we went from having, you know, one or two out-of-town candidates, you know, that we had to pick from the two that the state would supply. Um, with the system we're employing now, we, we have an abundance of candidates, we have to screen people out. You know, we have upwards of, you know, 30 applications pending that want to come and be part of our team. So it's, it's really been helpful, and it was just, it was a good move on our part, it was good strategic planning um, from a couple of years ago, so I just wanted to acknowledge that and let the board know it is working, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Chief, and thank you for your leadership on that, on, on the civil, civil service issue, and um, I'm sure these, these new, new guys will be well-known to the public pretty soon.
Yeah, absolutely, and a lot of the towns around us now are starting to, they're, they're following us, you know, we have, um, the, the surrounding towns are, are pulling out of civil, civil service as well, so we've, we've beat them to the cream of the crop.
Great.
Just to give you another, so the, the last crop, the crop that we just started the academy, we, normally, it would have taken, we went faster from their applications to get in on board, that would have taken to get the scores from civil service for the test. That is how much faster, and I'm not talking about weeks here, right, it's still was months of review, but it takes months just to get scores out of tests, so, so, and there's no reason for, right, it's, it's 202024, right? I mean, you know, these aren't essays, it's a scan draft, right, so, uh, it, it, it's, it's, and again, as the chief said, it's allowed us to be a lot more nimble, uh, and to, to broaden, you know, for the pool, so we picked up some very interesting methods, I think, it's great, so, thank you.
Great, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks, Chief.
Just shifting gears for a second, so our, 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 um, capstone employee to introduce tonight is Julia Gillis.
You guys.
So, so Julia is our assistant town planner, she's up, is she on it, so, um, a little lag here, so, Julia's assistant planner. Hi, Julia.
Hi, how are you? Hi, Julia.
Julia joined us born, uh, she has a degree in planning from Bridgewater, I believe, is that right?
Um, so I majored in management information systems and marketing with a minor in geographic information systems.
So she's an expert in online work and planning, she had none of that. Um, and her little fun fact is she's recently taken up swimming as a hobby, so she'll have a lot of places to go do that right here, so. Uh, so welcome, Julia.
Thank you. Welcome, Julia.
Thank you, looking forward to working with the town. We're happy to have you.
I was just talking to Cassandra earlier, and she and Julie have a lot of work going on, all of these zoning things, which we talked about. Uh, so Julia jumped right in, so she's, lots going on, so thank you, welcome.
Great, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Well.
All right, that's, those are our employees for that for the night, so. There'll be more, we tried to, we'll try this quarterly, we'll try to get this back to quarterly, so we'll see some new folks in a couple of months, so.
Great.
Great. Great, thank you, Chris, that's, um, it's, it's fun, it, it's fun, it, it's great to see, you know, staff building and, um, and people coming on board. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the sewer membrane replacement vote. May I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement by and between Xenon Environmental Corporation and the town of Cohasset?
I'll move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, does this need a roll call, Chris, or?
No, you're in.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks very much. Okay, license permits and events, first up, um, sorry, my eyes are not good, Aaron Teriyaki, installation of a sign on Cohasset Common, it's an Eagle Scout project, so. Please come on up.
There you go, fine.
Yep, it's fine. And how do you say your first name?
Uh, Aaron.
Aaron, okay, maybe take, grab the microphone. Or online have a difficult time hearing.
So my name is Aaron Teriyaki, I'm currently a rising sophomore at Cohasset High School, and I'm June 28th, I'm a senior patrol leader, and I'm working on this Eagle Scout project. So what I'm trying to present to you here today for your approval is a sign on the common that will hold us, uh, information about its past and buildings around it. Um, it'll be a Woody sign placed next to Robert E. Jason Road. As you can see here, next to the church here, and facing the common will be this side of the sign, which will include, um, in-depth descriptions of four major buildings next to the common, as well as a list of, um, all the houses surrounding the common, and various information about that. Um, and the sign will be right here. On the other side, facing the benches, in the small park of the common, will be this side of the sign with information about Cohasset's general history and the common's history itself, as well as, uh, what it is today, and various minutes later. So, so far, I've met and gained approval from the Cohasset Historical Commission, as well as Cohasset Common Historical, Strategic Commission, and, uh, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Mr. Farag?
Um, fir- first, I'd like to thank you for taking on this project. Uh, Aaron was actually in the Cub Scouts when I was the Cub Master of PAC 38, and it's great to see that he's grown up, he's gone all the way through Boy Scouts, and now he's at the last threshold, which is to earn his Eagle Scout badge, which I'm an Eagle Scout, by the way, as well, so. Uh, hopefully, congratulations coming for that, uh, but I think this, this project is great. Um, when the Historical Commission was in front of us a couple of weeks ago, um, this is really gonna help as a conduit to help, uh, engage the citizenry to see some of the history of the, the town common. Uh, and when you think of some of the events that we have on the common, whether it's the, you know, whether it's the Thursdays, where they, where they have the farmer's market, or whether in the summer, when they have the, um, the arts festival with people from out of town, is that it's not just gonna be people from Cohasset, it's gonna be people throughout the whole South Shore to be able to see this and enjoy this, and also get a piece of the Cohasset history, so, uh, I'm, I'm, I can't be pleased enough with it, and, and hopefully, it'll, it'll stay us through the rain and the snow and everything, and everything else that happens there, so thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Mr. Grady?
Congratulations, and thank you. And thank you to your parents. Um, and thank you to the Cub Scout leader and the Scout leader. One of the wonderful things about, I said, I was a scout, I only made it to Star, but I get, did get the Order of the Arrow. One of the wonderful things about Cohasset is a very strong scouting program, which we see the projects that you do, but it is, you know, something in which positive values of citizenship and honesty are cherished and developed. Um, we are so fortunate, and we also, I always like to thank the parents and thank the scout leaders, because they continue this year after year, and you know what's gonna happen? When you have kids, if you're still in Cohasset, you'll be a scout leader, too, so, anyway, congratulations and thank you. And thank you to your dad over there, I see him over there.
Mr. Grady?
I think it's a fantastic project, I would prove it.
Yeah, Mr. Flex?
I think it's a great project, especially on nights like tonight, where we have a lot of visitors in town, wandering around. This is a great way to give them a little bit more information about our great town. I am a little tempted to quiz you on some of the history up there, but it looks like you did your homework, so.
So basically, um, this is not just all their information, I'm gonna be getting with, uh, the Cohasset Historical Society and organizing my own information without you, this is just my.
Just go easy on Town Hall, we're not done with it.
It's historic.
So it's the historical part.
I'm kidding you.
I just, one quick, if you could explain to people at home, because they might have seen it, um, the, in the, in the bottom corner, you've got the QR code, if you could explain what that is, too, yeah.
Yeah, sure, uh, this is gonna be a link to the Cohasset's, uh, very active town website, uh, showing resources, and helping people more information about, um, Cohasset's history, as well as the common's history.
Wait, I was gonna say, he's got all the, the, the Cohasset Common history, but the only thing that's not there is when Jack Nicholson went flying across, when, when we were filming, they were filming The Witches of Eastwood, so that's the only thing that's not there, but.
Yeah.
People could get that movie, I guess, online and go.
That could be the next sign.
That'll be the next sign coming, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, Aaron, can I have a motion to approve the Eagle Scout project for Aaron Teriyaki, the installation of a historic sign on Cohasset Common?
Well, I think the Cub Master needs to take that motion.
I'll make a motion.
And I'd like to say.
Okay, so, Mr. Farag, and Mr. Creighton, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you so much.
When, when do you expect it to be installed?
Um, I'll be fundraising next, and then I'll probably install sometime in spring.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, on, on this point, so, um, Mr. Farag had mentioned about the Cohasset Historical sign, which I, I looked at Mrs. Dormitzer's placement, which is right at the end of the crosswalk, um, coming across, they're, they're not, you know, too tight together.
We'll make sure that they align nicely.
Yeah. And if we have more signs in the offing, perhaps we look for.
I'm just, plethora of them also.
Yeah, well, I think.
I think QR, I was actually, I talked to Cassandra, a planner, earlier about the use of QR codes to be able to link to more information, so I think we'd like to work with, with Aaron on that, to, to make a little robust mechanism, maybe we can have a link to the Witches of Eastwood, so.
Yeah, some video, yeah.
No. Mr. Grady wants a picture of the select board up there.
I'm a little bit.
I'll respectfully decline on my, on my own behalf. Okay, next up, um, the next event, the 2024 Coastal Sweet Beach Cleanup scheduled for Sunday, September 15th, 2024, um, as applied for by the Cohasset Garden Club, is there anyone here from the garden club? Nope, Chief Quigley's here, um. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, it seems pretty straightforward, um, they've, they've been doing it for a while.
It is, and this is, um, there's almost no impact to traffic or parking. Um, this is just more for, uh, process that this is on, and, and to shed some light, and, you know, just highlight the good work that these folks are doing. But, um, there's no, no other events on the 15th, and, uh, should be relatively, like I said, low impact.
Excellent, thank you, Chief, so can I have a motion to approve the 2024 Coastal Beach, Coast Sweet Beach Cleanup for Sunday, September 15th? Second, Mr. Flex, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, next event is the Thanks For Giving 5K, um, for November 28th, 2024. Note it's its 16th annual, this is sponsored by the Cohasset Recreation Department, um, in conjunction with the Clark Chatterton Fund, or they, they split, they split the fundraising. Chief, any comments on this?
No, this is a longstanding event, a great event, lots of fun that morning, and, um, it's very well organized by Ted and his crew, and we have a standing plan, and everybody's on board.
Excellent, thank you, any questions, anyone? Nope, may I have a motion to approve the Thanks For Giving 5K Road Race on November 28th?
Oh, moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks very much. Okay, next, uh, board and committee appointments and updates. First one is for the Elder Affairs Board and Non-Voting Associate Member Position. The applicant is Mr. David Begley, who I believe is here, would you like to come up?
Yep.
Sure, yes, please. And if you want to, unless you have a booming voice, grab the microphone.
Yeah.
Please.
Is that booming enough?
Definitely use the mic. People at home, yeah. Fine.
Better?
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, do you have questions, or should I be making a statement?
Well, you could just tell us a little bit about your interest and and why you'd like to be an associate member.
Well, uh, first of all, I have uh reached a certain age where the senior center is uh becoming a bigger part of my life. And a bigger part than I actually anticipated. I was actually asked to join. I I think it's a very valuable uh part of uh the lives of many uh senior citizens in this town. They offer the the uh elder services through, well, comments offers a huge uh variety of services to people, including, you know, three days uh a week, uh, and very, very nice lunch. We played three hours of bocce right outside the window there today. Uh, we do that twice a week, there's, I host a men's group, uh, discussion group uh once a week. I I just think it's a very valuable uh function of uh the town, and I would be happy to be a bigger part of it, a more a more integrated part of it. I'm I'm a consumer of it, and I'm here at least three, sometimes four days a week. And uh, I I just, somebody, a couple of board members asked me if I uh would like to join, and I said, sure, I will.
Thank you for volunteering, we um, we appreciate everyone who who steps up to to work on our boards and committees. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Begley, your comments?
I'd like to make the uh motion if no other board member wishes to speak. By the way, you've been very well recommended, you have lots of people lobbied for you, and you know what that means? You gotta do a good job.
As long as it doesn't involve a Cory check.
Wow.
No promises. Did you have any comments? Okay, so can I have a motion to, I know, Mr. Creighton, you made it, but for the record, I'd like to state, please. I'd like to make them, I'd like to hear a motion to approve Mr. David Begley as a non-voting associate member of the Elder Affairs Board.
So moved.
Sec- second, Mr. Flex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you very much.
Now, can I ask, do I uh have to go and be sworn in, is that a process?
So what'll happen is that there's a a form that gets filled out, it'll go to you. You bring it back to the clerk, you assign her in her presence, and you're sworn in.
Okay.
And that form that they ask you about your bank account, just sign it.
Yeah, right. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
There is an ethics that you have to take on. You already done?
Yeah, because I'm already on the board at one.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's old half for you.
Okay, thank you. So next up is the Harbor Committee, um, a CSCR representative, it's a reappointment of Ms. Susan Bryant, is she online or here? No. It is a reappointment, there were no other applicants, this is a specific seat on that committee as the CSCR representative. So if no one has any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, the Social Recycling Committee, a three-year term for Brian Joyce, which is also a reappointment, and there's no other applicants, may I have a motion to approve?
Oh.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Community Preservation Committee, the Conservation Commission Rep. So, stick with me on this one. Chris McIntyre to fill an unexpired term for a one-year term, so it expires next June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. And then the Planning Board Rep on the CPC is uh Amy Glassmeyer for a three-year term, that's a reappointment.
Well, it's actually a new appointment, she's succeeding someone who's not.
Oh, she's succeeding, okay, so that's a new appointment. All right, so I'm going to do these separately, can I have a motion, is Mr. McIntyre and Ms. Glassmeyer here? No. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve Mr. Chris McIntyre to fill the unexpected term on the CPC term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five?
Oh.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Flex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve Amy Glassmeyer for a three-year term on the CPC?
Glad to make that.
Oh, second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, the next two are um, reappointments, uh, the town and Chris, if I misspeak, please feel free to jump in. Uh, the Norfolk, uh, Cohasset has a representative assigned to the Norfolk County Advisory Board, Ms. Diane Kennedy has been our representative um, for a few years, handful of years, maybe more. Um, and she will gladly serve again, so this would be a a reappointment for a one-year term. Does anyone have any questions?
Is there a meeting at some point that where we get, I won't say like a report, but that we catch up with her regarding sort of what's going on there with the budget and everything?
Yes, she and then then our next agenda item have both volunteered to come in.
Okay, great.
And provide reports.
Thank you.
Yep, um, so can I have a motion to appoint Diane Kennedy as our Norfolk County Advisory Board Representative?
Oh.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Farag, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next one um is the MBT Advisory Committee, which I understand by the provisions of the committee, the Chair of the Select Board is, or their designee, sits on that committee. And in Cohasset, um, the Chair has not sat on that, it has been, uh, Cory Evans has done it for a few years as a designee for previous Chairs, and he has volunteered to um sit on the committee again and then come in at some point and give us a presentation. Any questions? No, okay, can I have a motion to appoint Cory Evans to the MBTA Advisory Committee?
Oh.
Second?
Second, Mr. Flex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, okay, the next one, um, so, thi- this came up and it's, um, we've, we talked about it the last meeting, we have seats on two committees, and we have liaisons to a few others. And um, this is a Select Board Liaison Liaison to the Board of Health. Um, considering, you know, some of the current events going on in town, um, Mr. Farag actually brought it, sorry, I keep saying your name improperly, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. To my attention, um, that he would be honored to serve as a liaison. Um, I know Mr. Grady has been doing some work, um, as well with Mr. Senior with our health agent. I think the position is worthwhile. I think we could have two, we could have one person to the Board of Health and one to um, our health agent, Pam Fahy. Or or you could work together, I mean, it's not a subcommittee, we could have two liaisons.
Just work together.
Okay.
Work together.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to fill David in, and, you know, we've started, began with preserve, you know, we've turned up the heat in the oven, and um,
Okay.
It's getting interesting.
Okay, so, that so that being said, you guys can work together, but you can't share your your conversations with us till we get to open meeting.
Yeah.
Including me, so, um, otherwise that's a quorum and it's a violation, and I'm okay with that. Not with a violation, but with you. I'm never okay with a violation, no. Okay, so, um, is, Jack, do you have any comments or questions about this?
My only, uh, no, I think it's uh, as I've indicated before, um, health and those types of issues are crucial. Are everything in town. So, if we have an issue with the preserve of their health violations, my concern is that to, if there's going to be a broadening of the mandate to include all rental properties in town, that we should probably have a robust discussion because I think there'll be a lot of people who will have different viewpoints. And what the kind of tools that you, I know this professionally, kind of tools you use against a large landlord are not the type of situations that you do with somebody who owns a two-family and rents out the second floor.
Okay. I I I think your your point's well noted, and that's probably what the our liaisons and Board of Health and Mr. Senior will uh ferret out, and as you stated before, Mr. Senior, um, Hall has been doing this, and so they have a a variety of larger and smaller landlords and perhaps can provide some guidance on best practices. Okay.
I do agree with Jack, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach.
But it is kind of an all or nothing, either all get inspected or all done.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, um, so, um, may I have a motion to appoint, um, sorry, Mr. Grady and Mr. Farag as Select Board Liaisons to the Board of Health? Sure, you can make a motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. Next up is a presentation, um, our annual update from the Alternative Energy Committee, Spodel online.
Hi, yes, Tanya Bodell from the Alternative Energy Committee, and we actually do quarterly updates. So this is our second quarter update to give you some information on what's been happening. We do have two exciting opportunities that we want to share with you, hopefully for a future vote to approve or feedback back to us to make sure you're comfortable with the direction we'd like to go in. So if I could share my screen, or if somebody else wants to pull it up?
Uh, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, it says host disabled attendee sharing screen, so maybe I need permission.
I think it's kind of frozen for a sec.
Oh, here we go, okay, so. Thank you, not our first rodeo together. All right, I'm going to go into uh slide. Um, I cannot see you when we go into this for some reason, so feel free to interrupt me at any time if you have questions. Um, you did receive a presentation that has a lot more information than I'm going to review, it includes an appendix with additional details on a number of our initiatives to give you an update. I would like to focus on two opportunities that we have before us and um, just share our information with you, and we're happy to give you more. You also should have received some additional detail about these opportunities in your package. So we're going to do a quick overview of the value that we've created for the town, talk about National Grid Community Solutions, which is one of the opportunities, and then talk about the Climate Leaders Program, and our recommendations on both of those is to proceed, and then we can discuss next steps. To date, our benefits to the town keeps clicking, more than two-point-two million dollars in benefits the town has already received, and that does not include uh the energy efficiency cost savings that have come with a lot of those grants and investments. We are charged with looking at energy, alternative energy resource opportunities, helping with grants and procurements, and with the town manager reporting to on our progress, so this ties to our priorities. Uh, and these are the members of my amazing committee, the passion is incredible, and Doran Hall, thank you for quickly appointing him as our associate position. Uh, he is already up and running and doing a lot of contributions. This is the basis for the two-point-two million in value, you've seen this before, there's nothing new here. The key thing I'd like to say is Green Communities at one-point-oh-two-one million dollars has, for the most part, run its course with respect to Cohasset. Uh, we, at the last uh grant, basically, were told that this is your last grant, you've hit your mark. Uh, there are a lot of other towns that have not gotten anywhere near this, and so there's a new program we would like to pursue, and that's the Climate Leaders Program. I will talk about that after I talk about sort of the easier program to get our arms around, which is the National Grid Program. So the National Grid, uh, National Grid is trying to help encourage municipalities to engage in energy efficiency for itself as well as for the residents of the town. This is particularly important for Cohasset because our feeder line coming in from the transmission system is reaching its full capacity. So in lieu of making an investment to upgrade that, uh, this helps to incentivize the town to find ways to decrease our load. That is good for us, it's good for our bills as residents, as well as for the town, it's also good for the entire system. And so National Grid is willing to give us money to pursue those types of programs to reduce our uh energy consumption and to engage in um clean energy opportunities as we have it. So what is it and how does it work? Uh, it's a partnership between us and National Grid. The point is to help us reduce energy use for the town, our residents and local businesses. Um, they're considered community solutions. How it works is we enter into a non-binding memorandum of understanding. We have already sent this to town council, who has provided comments. Those comments were sent to National Grid, whose council has provided comments, and I think you received a redlined version. You should be able to discern that the comments at this point are not content, they're very um sort of around the edges. But our focus in the MOU would be to initially emphasize the town's usage and engage in energy efficiency for the town, and we would also pick a focus, probably given our high residential community focused on residential. Um, and I say that also because the electric vehicle charging, I think we've already done a very good job on, and we have some initial opportunities that we're already pursuing. But we would work with you to identify what you'd like us to focus on, I think our recommendation would be residential. And National Grid will pay us money to engage in energy efficiency and achieve those kilowatt-hour reductions in electricity consumption. And this is a table that indicates some of the uh money that we would be paid for kilowatt-hour savings goals. And you can see there's also incentives for gas because National Grid provides both gas and electricity to the town of Cohasset.
Tanya, we're not seeing a table.
Her screen and camera.
So you're not seeing the table, or you are?
No.
No, we're not.
Are you seeing any presentation?
Just, just the front page.
Oh, crap, all right, well, I'm on page seven. Let me try this again.
We do have it in our packet.
If you try it.
Let's see.
Her screen's just like blacked out.
Okay, you know what, what I might do is zoom on this first, I was on slideshow. Let me try this.
I think you were sharing PowerPoint, but not the slideshow.
Okay, so you you do not see a switch from the first page to the second.
Right now, we're looking at a black screen.
Okay, let me try this again. And it is amazing how many times we have done this and how there are still technical issues.
Yeah, okay, can you pull it up in the packet or?
Oh, close to come on.
Okay, we're.
The cursor's moving so maybe.
Can can you see the slideshow now?
We do, we still just see the title page.
Okay, so what I might do is just move down, can you see the second page?
There you go.
Okay, we'll just do this.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do this instead of slideshow.
Yeah. I think you said you're on page seven or eight.
Yes. I will make this bigger. Okay. So we talked about our mission, our team, the two-point-two million dollars in value we've already created, pointing out the green communities is a large part of that, about half, and then moved into the National Grid MOU. This is the page that we were talking about, so the table is at the bottom, which gives us an indication of the incentives that we would get in exchange for our kilowatt-hour and natural gas therms savings goals. I'm going to zoom in, hopefully this works. Can you see that table?
Yes.
Okay, so we are talking about in exchange for our first year, second year, third year, um, you know, more than a quarter of a million dollars for being able to achieve our energy efficiency goals. The first focus, as I said, would be on the town, so in addition to getting paid by National Grid, we would also receive the savings in a reduced electricity bill and a reduced natural gas bill. And so the total savings obviously could be more over the life of the investment. Now, the investment to achieve those energy efficiency um savings can be funded by grants. Now, the investment to achieve those energy efficiency savings can be funded by grants. And National Grid will also help us to identify which grants we may pursue to be able to make those investments. Interestingly, there's a synergy with the Climate Leaders Program. Because as you may remember, in the Green Communities Program, almost the entirety of that $1 million in grants went towards energy efficiency investments. And a large part of that was for the schools, which are our biggest buildings. And so there's around a quarter of a million dollars in incentives over the course of three years to achieve energy efficiency savings goals with respect to electricity usage and natural gas usage. We would, this is an example, so these are rough numbers, but we would help, we would work with National Grid, who understands our usage to help set realistic goals that we think can be achieved. And we would create a roadmap with their help on how we might achieve those energy efficiency goals. And so this is a carrot reward program that would help us do this. And in addition, they would provide us with support to help get the grants and the funding to be able to make the investments at a reduced cost that would help to achieve these savings. Are there any questions at this point?
No, I think we're good.
Okay, so we're going to go to the next one, which is next steps. So as I said, the, this program, we've been chosen for a reason. We were provided the MOU. The other reason, I think, is they know we're very active, and we've interfaced with them and have a very collaborative relationship with National Grid through the work that the Alternative Energy Committee has done and through the interactions with the town. And so National Grid has provided us with the MOU, as I previously said. We have sent it to Town Council via Town Staff. They provided redline edits. National Grid accepted nearly all the edits and made minor changes. You've received a summary presentation of the program and a redline draft of the non-binding MOU for your consideration. And the next steps would be for you to review that program and the MOU. If there are additional questions that you have, we most certainly can interface with National Grid, work with you to help answer those questions. And then I would think you'd want to vote to sign the MOU or send it to the town manager for his decision. You do need to assign a point person. We have an interim assignment right now, and the Alternative Energy Committee remains very involved. We would like to continue that involvement, as we have with Green Communities and some of the other grant programs, to pursue energy efficiency. And then once that is signed, we can start developing a plan with National Grid and start earning grants, incentives, and rewards. Are there any questions?
No. On the board, any questions? No? Thank you, Tanya. This was excellent.
Wait, let me say there's one more program.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Well, I, I thought you were just going to get through to the next steps. I apologize.
Nope, nope, that's all right. I do have another next steps because I'm a consultant, so we always end with that. Okay, the next opportunity, which is very synergistic with the National Grid Program, is the Climate Leaders Program. This is somewhat of a heavier lift, but we have done a lot of research to believe we can do this as a town. And we do know that there are other towns that are already moving forward and ahead of us on this. And that puts them in a front position, a leading position, to obtain some of the grants, to invest in energy efficiency and other investments. Basically, the Massachusetts government is using the Climate Leaders Program as a way of moving grant money into the communities. And so being able to be a climate leader would help us. The Climate Leader Program is basically Green Communities 2.0. And as I said, we've already sort of achieved that. Most of the Massachusetts communities are green communities, and most of them have not obtained the full amount of the grants that we have. So we have been talking to the program administrators about what the next steps would be, and they told us about the Green, the Climate Leaders Program. And it's an evolution, right? It's a way to take the frontrunners, of which we're considered one, to move from the Green Communities criteria to a slightly stricter standard to be a climate leader. The key things that we haven't already done would be a municipal decarbonization commitment, would be a municipal decarbonization roadmap with 2030 and 2050 goals. We would need to do a zero EV first vehicle policy, which is a continuation of some of the work we've already been doing in investing in EVs. And there's a specialized stretch code adoption. Each of these components would have to be communicated, shared, socialized with feedback before we would take them to town meeting to see if the town wants to pursue these components required to be a climate leader. And I will say, as an example, the town of Milis, who has 8,500 people, around the same size of Cohasset, recently put out an RFP for a consultant to come and do a climate action plan for them, specifically so they could become a climate leader. So there are other towns in Massachusetts who see this as a way of continuing the grant process, increasing energy efficiency, and achieving some of the incentives that we've been able to avail ourselves of. But there are some requirements to do it. The Alternative Energy Committee has researched each of these, and we do think that it is viable and frankly, good governance to pursue. And the good governance comes down to the fact that the state has a net zero goal by 2050, 2040. If we don't take the lead on this, the state will be telling us what to do. And so by moving forward with this, creating our own decarbonization plan, our own net zero plan on how we as a town want to get there, we are in control. So for a lot of reasons, the Alternative Energy Committee believes that this is a good program to pursue. And part of it goes down to the good governance, as well as being able to obtain some of those incentives that combined with the National Grid Program would effectively double up on the investment opportunities that we are able to get funding for. But it is more complicated. We did solicit, if you recall, a, you gave us permission to put out a survey. And we really see that in the town of Cohasset, most people want a plan. They're very concerned about climate change. And they, most of them indicate that it's very important to them that the town have a climate action plan. So we feel that the town people would be very supportive of pursuing net zero goals in a climate action plan. And again, recognizing that we're in the context of the greater Commonwealth, which is already pursuing that. It behooves us, I think, to try to stay ahead of this and to move forward and to get the incentives for early to be able to have control. 135 people provided their names out of 300, very interested in being involved. And we have a larger analysis to be able to provide to you, but these were the highlights of the survey. And it just resoundingly told us people are very supportive of a climate action plan. And I will say, before I'm asked, we tried to get everybody to pursue this. We put on 143. We had it at public places. We went and showed up at different public events with the surveys. We received more responses than the town of Hingham did for their survey. And we did get some comments that are very negative. And, and that's what you can see on some of the, they don't think it's important. It's not concerned at all. This is a waste of time. You know, you can imagine some of the comments. I'm sure you've seen them. But generally, what we found from that survey is the town would be very supportive. They're very concerned about climate change and would be very supportive for a climate action plan. So we do think that the town would support moving forward with Climate Leaders Program. And we have done enough research to believe that although it is a lift, it is something that would pass that town meeting. So our recommendation is to proceed with the Climate Leaders Program and pursuing each of the comment, components required to be considered a climate leader. That's a little bit of information on the stretch code, which Steve Winter did a huge amount of research on. So these are the two programs we wanted to raise with you, National Grid MOU and the Climate Leaders Program. The town, the Climate Leaders Program has components that do require a town meeting vote going forward before we start moving forward with these initiatives. We just wanted to get your feedback. It doesn't happen, have to happen today. But hopefully, having given you this background and what it would entail and what we would achieve from it, you'd be able to have a more detailed conversation among yourselves and then give us some guidance on how you'd like us to proceed.
Okay. All right, thank, thank you, Tanya. So I, I think there's perhaps one action we can take this evening. And I would concur with a recommendation that we direct the town manager to review and sign the MOU as instead of the whole board. Chris?
Yeah, so I took a look at the MOU. It, it looks very positive. I do have a couple of things, Tanya, that I'd like you to check on. There's a significant section on the indemnification of National Grid in that MOU. I don't see any section on the indemnification of the town in that section. So that's something, if we are still at a point in the process where we can have that conversation with National Grid, I think we should. But that would be my only comment specific to the MOU. I've got other comments that are more general. But if we're focused on the MOU, Tanya, that's the one thing that I think we should ask National Grid and Town Council to take a look at is that indemnification language.
That's perfect. That is perfect. We are most certainly happy to make sure that that is considered.
And then just briefly on the rest of the program, I work with these programs every day in my day job. They're great. I'm thrilled to see that Cohasset is participating. Tanya, I'm also happy to hear that you're not letting those negative comments weigh too heavily on us. People get pretty confident when they sit behind a keyboard, more so than they probably should be. So I'm glad you're giving those the appropriate weight. And then the last thing I'll mention is that I saw that there was some discussion of gas incentives, which I think is good for a town that already has a lot of gas infrastructure. I would just encourage you to have a conversation with National Grid about when those gas incentives might be sunsetting. Because the energy efficiency plans that are going into the DPU later this year might be changing those. So you might want to talk to National Grid about potentially accelerating those if they apply to residential or if they're commercial, just to make sure if there's an opportunity to advantage of them, we don't miss the window.
I appreciate that, and I am glad that you're aware of the roadmap to decarbonization that the utilities have proposed and, in effect, adopted. Because of the net zero goals of the state, natural gas is to be phased out. And that leaves us as a town that relies on natural gas, especially during outages, particularly vulnerable. And our hope is that as part of the Alternative Energy Program and these opportunities, that we're able to move forward and create some mitigation and support for the residents and the town itself. So that as that natural gas phases out, we are not concerned.
So could you?
Go ahead.
Through all of this, and I've been very supportive over, over the years, as, as you well know. But it appears that the long-term policy is to completely phase out and prohibit natural gas to heat our homes. Is, is that kind of like a correct assessment of what the Alternative Energy Committee is looking at?
No, I would say we don't have a policy. We're advisory. We don't advocate. We're advisory. We can make recommendations based on our research, but at the end of the day, you set the policy. We are making recommendations in the context of the Commonwealth's stated policy of phasing out natural gas and moving to net zero by 2040. So it's in that context that we're recognizing this is a potential risk to our town and that we should be prepared to take the driver's seat in figuring out how we're going to protect ourselves.
Well, that was really my point is to, you know, the alert the, the town to, in fact, there is a very strong public policy to eliminate your ability to heat your home with natural gas. And as an alternative energy, I'm assuming that you're kind of on the ground floor. I'm not asking what your policy is. This is clearly not your policy. But I think the town people should be aware that behind all of this, there's a very concerted effort to ban natural gas.
That's on the state level.
Jack, if I could just correct you, there's no concerted effort to ban natural gas.
Okay.
Okay.
I might suggest that there are a number of things in policy papers by people who are involved in this, who strongly advocate decarbonization and getting rid of natural gas.
You can suggest whatever you'd like.
You have not read anything that says that?
I read it every day.
So you're telling me that there is no plan to get rid of natural gas?
I want to make sure we're speaking from a position of facts.
Fine. And all I said is, very simply, that there are a lot of papers that have been written. There's been a lot of studies. There's been a lot of advocacy that's advocated for getting rid of the use of natural gas and carbon fuels. That's all I'm stating. And you're saying, but you're just saying that there is no such studies.
I did not say there are no such stuff.
All right, that's all I said.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Bodell?
No, that, that is what we wanted to share. Like I said, there's additional information that we provided in the appendix to give you updates on our other initiatives that are going forward, one of which is community aggregation. We'll be having a new price starting in December. But there will be a lot of marketing that happens before that point.
Speaking of community aggregation, are we tracking the, the rates of community aggregation compared to National Grid independent services?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Tanya. And?
We have been around on par. So in the winter months, we're below. In the summer months, we're above. And that's what you would expect in a fixed-price program that's smoothing out the pricing. But we, depending on usage, we're about where National Grid is with a higher amount of renewable energy. So superior product, same price.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question.
Yes.
Hi, Tanya. David Farag here. I was wondering if there was any, in your talk to National Grid or in the industry, is there any understanding how, or, or talk about how National Grid is going to increase the supply? How, we talked about how conservation is one way, but, but how about in the generation of, of power? Because if we have, everybody is going to switch to electric cars, towns are going to switch to electric cars. People move to, you know, electrifying their heat and other things like that. Conservation is, is one end of the, this, this scale, but what about the, the other end? Has there been talks or understanding about, about how they're going to expand the power?
Yes, there are talks in the industry all the time. You may know that the utilities are not allowed to own generation. They only purchase energy from the wholesale market that the ISO New England procures and operates. And so the ISO New England has had a lot of discussions about what the new energy resources mean, how much you need to procure. They're required to procure a certain amount to ensure the reserve margins. And so that's going to be an ongoing effort done at the wholesale level. And there's also been legislation that has required the utilities to buy certain types of energy, especially the renewables, to meet their renewable portfolio standard requirements. So they are required to purchase certain types of energy to meet the renewable portfolio standards. And the actual marketplace procures that through capacity markets and energy markets managed by ISO New England, the independent system operator.
Thank you. I hope that'll be illuminating for everyone here and everyone listening at home as well.
Just to clarify, alternative energy, I mean, alternative intelligence, which we're all reading about, is growing by leaps and bounds. It is very, very energy intensive. And some of the new plants that are being proposed and built are actually including their own. And some of the new plants that are being proposed and built are actually including their own private energy supply. Because there is the question about the overall grid's ability to meet this new demand and how that's going to happen. And I think that is a matter of concern.
That is happening, and it's happening at all levels, artificial intelligence and data centers. Every phone you charge requires more electricity than if you didn't have that phone. And same with the EVs and the other electrification. So on the state level, there's been a lot of pressure on cryptocurrency miners, as well as the data centers to ensure that they're not contributing carbon emissions into the environment, and that they're getting a lot of pressure from their potential regulators to go with cleaner energy resources. And so there's some very innovative things they've been doing, whether it's co-locating next new nuclear power plants or landfill for landfill gas fire generation. Most certainly, it's not 100% of those the players in that industry, but there is some effort underway, and it is very recognized in the industry, this looming demand increase that we have not seen for a long time.
Okay. I had one more last thing. But before we get to the questions, I just want to thank you and the Alternative Energy Committee for all the work you've done. Past president, and hopefully future. Cohasset has been on the forefront of these issues. And as you've seen from the presentation, we've actually tapped all the grants that are onto the next round of things. So thank you for all your work.
And I want to add, Tanya, as you know, I've worked with you for a long period of time, and the town should know how responsive alternative energy has been to inputs from elements of the community to make sure that, number one, they're representing what Cohasset's community wants, but also they're listening and explaining. And they're a very hardworking committee. And thank you and all of the committee for the hard work you've done. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, everybody. And again, I just want to call out my very passionate committee, that the support, we can get so much done because we have just incredible people on that committee. So please take a moment to look at who is on that committee and thank them directly, because I could not do it without them.
Will do. Thank you, Tanya. So I think we have one action point we could take this evening, and the second probably provides, probably requires a little bit further conversation. It seems kind of complex, and it also will require something at town meeting. I'm not sure if we're talking special town meeting or town meeting. Town meeting, yeah, because the warrant article could be quite complicated to construct in a way that people understand exactly what's being asked. So what the AEC would like is an approval for the MOU with Mr. Plex's request for indemnification. And I would like to see if the board is interested in just directing the town manager to sign the revised MOU with an update on indemnifications. And maybe, Chris, if you get it, Mr. Senior, you can just send it to Mr. Plex for a review. And if the board approves, we'll just authorize for Senior to sign it. Everyone okay with that?
Well, a copy will be sent to it.
Well, we'll get copies. Yeah, absolutely.
Before it's signed.
Okay, sure.
Okay, good. I'm in favor.
Okay. So if we get a copy in a group email, you can only respond. We all know we can only respond singly back to Mr. Senior. Okay, so do we need a motion, Chris, that you're authorized to sign on our behalf? Can I have a motion to authorize Mr. Senior to sign the revised MOU with National Grid?
I will.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. All right, next up is discussion on a select board handbook draft. So I sent around a very rough draft. As we talked about briefly at the last meeting, that it would be forthcoming. And this is a discussion and a conversation. Did not put vote on the agenda, so we won't vote. And I'd like to open it up to whomever would like to comment. And that would be nobody? Okay. Go ahead, sure.
Regarding the, regarding the press and also regarding town hall staff, I guess the only thing is, is it seems that with some of the language, it becomes more constricting for a select board member in dealing with the press in different ways. I do understand that that we want to have, you know, try and speak with one voice as much as possible, but also you have to balance that we're elected and then people people want us to speak for them as well as their representatives. So I think it's a balance. Generally speaking, I try and be, and everybody should be reserved in their comments, knowing that when we speak, we speak with distinguish the fact that we're one board member or speaking as a citizen, that we're out there with apparent authority as a select board member. And so we carry that with us, whether we like or not. But I'm just a little worried on it in the sense that why should we restrict ourselves more than what somebody in the public would be when when they elect us to help speak for them? And it could be on any issue. I just think there's a balance. And yes, board members should be reserved in their comments to as much as possible. Regarding the town hall staff, things like that, I found a little bit restrictive on that. Shouldn't be walk around town hall, you know, order people around and, you know, having, you know, count pens and paper clips and things like that. But I think there is also things when we're dealing with other town hall employees, if we need copies of things or working on projects, being liaisons or things like that. That, again, why would we want to create rules that restricts us more than what the general public would be, where the general public would walk in to the town planning office and say, hey, I'd like a copy of this plan? And they would get it where we would have to go through a different protocol to do that. So those were the two things that I thought that there's a little bit of a friction on. But otherwise, I think it's more of a guidepost. Most of the things are sensible in there for what what the select board members should be doing. It's good to have a guidepost, but those are my only concerns.
Okay. Mr. Plex?
So David, I agree with everything that you said. I think you're raising good points. The, I think the consideration that makes it different is when you are a member of the select board, even if you're commenting as a private citizen, there's an implication that you're speaking as a select board member, even if that's overtly clarified in the conversation that you're speaking as an individual. In a private conversation, I don't think it matters. In a conversation with a public institution or with the media, I think you start to blur the line to where there is an implied representation, which can be problematic for all the very good points that you made. So to me, that's why a higher standard is appropriate. And I especially think the language that's in here about making sure that there is clear communication with the rest of the select board about those conversations having happened, gives us the opportunity, if we have a different perspective, to make sure there's some balance.
The, well, first of all, very problematic to the extent that you can tell a elected official what they can and cannot say. If I'm a senator and I speak on a matter of national policy, I don't have to go to Chuck Schumer and get permission. I don't think there is an issue here. If you say, I am speaking for the Senate or the select board, that's one thing. But it's very clear that you're not being able to communicate to your constituents as an elected official with a public record. You should be able to speak. And the other side is the public has a right to hear right what you're saying. The other thing is, quite honestly, that aspect of it, in my opinion, is flat out unenforceable. And there's another thing that, as I read through some of these things, it seems to be a little bit at variance with some parts of the existing bylaws. Has this been vetted to make sure that it's not that's in compliance with the actual bylaws?
No, this is a first grade.
All right, I just wanted to clarify because there are some issues.
Such as?
How the agenda is set. It says the, I believe it says the chair in conjunction with the town manager, I believe that somewhere, and it may, is that the agenda is set by the chair and the vice chair and the town manager. That was my recollection. I was unable to get to the bylaws. And all I'm pointing out is that, you know, we certainly should have this congruent with whatever bylaws.
Yep, no problem.
I also don't see there's an enforcement mechanism. How do you enforce the backing? If you don't like it, does the select board then, you know, vote to remove the offending select portman? And from whence does that authority sign? All kinds of questions on that. The other thing on a broader thing, we as a town are facing a horrible issue with the senior center. The seniors feel very, very upset. We have a fairly substantial turnover in town personnel. I've been trying for a number of years to get a list of the turnovers. I've been told I can go to the town archives, but it's not been provided for me. We have a town hall that needs urgent, you know, work. We have to figure that one out. It's going to be very, very expensive. And I think that we should be focusing on the major issues of facing this town, and they're coming up. I mean, we're all basically in September. This is where this select board should be spending our issue, dealing with the real, real problems rather than trying to do bureaucratic, whatever you want to call it.
Well.
That.
I'm sorry, Jack. No, I was just going to say, you know, you're right, and we do have those items, Town Hall Working Group next on the agenda, and a preserve update after that on the agenda. And as we heard earlier, when we appointed David and Paul as liaisons to the Board of Health, that's also addressing that issue. I agree that it should be vetted with the bylaws, and I'm happy to see that that happens on the protocols. It's not uncommon. This is not an uncommon thing. If you had searched any other town website, from one page to 100 pages, all of our neighboring towns have some kind of language which governs. And in terms of a mechanism, there is no mechanism. I mean, we're an elected board. We work, unlike senators, we work as a board. We make decisions as a board. And you know, therefore, in my opinion, we should speak as a board. Doesn't mean the chair speaks all the time. If you read through it, or if you read through the MMA handbook, you can designate certain board members to speak on certain topics so that they can become, you know, topic experts and speak for the board. It's not about the chair being the spokesperson. And there is no mechanism. The state of Massachusetts doesn't have a recall mechanism. And the only way someone can leave a board is to is to resign. And it's and it's not meant to be punitive. It's meant to keep us, to have some guardrails on how we can best work together as a board and not as individuals. And that's my opinion. David, I'm very happy if you wanted to take the document and mark it up. As I said, this is just a first draft. I have no pride of ownership. Yes, Mr. Plex?
Oh, please finish.
No, no, I was just going to say, it's not about, you know, what I wrote. It's about what's best for the select board, for the town of Cohasset, this one, and future select boards. Go ahead.
So, Jack, you brought up two things. One was the comparison of the US Senate, and the other was the lack of enforcement. And I I think the lack of enforcement is intentional here because what we're trying to do is set standards for how we help each other do a good job as a board. If we were to follow the Senate model, you could take a look at the Constitution where it provides in Article One, Section Five, each house may determine the rules of its proceedings, punish its members for disorderly behavior, and with the concurrence of two-thirds, expel a member. We're not talking about that. But if that's the standard you want to stick to, keep in mind what the whole story is.
You finished?
Yes.
Well, that's fine. I do not see an enforcement mechanism, and I doubt that there an enforcement mechanism that said if a board member spoke to the media without proper permission of whomever, that you could remove that board member before that. But, you know, if you really wanted to do that, I suggest you should champion that cause.
I'll take a look at it. I think everybody should and have whatever markups they want as well. And also, I do think that when it comes to media, if we are reached out to or something that, you know, at a minimum, should have the courtesy to reach out to either the chair, town manager, or just FYI of what's, you know, of that and what's going on, if it's particular issues as well. Because it could be something that, you know, everybody wants to speak to or in opposition of a particular issue. It might not be where everybody's going to be on the same boat, so to speak. So I think some of those could get handled. But like I said, there's a lot of caveats in here that need to be looked at because I just don't, I think that you just don't want to, you don't want to restrict the board members beyond what the public can. I think that's the, that's kind of the issue. To me, that's like the line. Because why would people want to vote for a select board if they have they have less power than what they as a public have? I mean, there's no need. So what I've said my piece on, I think everybody understands.
So I'll get this, Tracy, this is in the Word document, correct, original? So I'll get the Word document out. So if you want to redline it, you know, with your comments, and we'll come back. Maybe not next meeting, maybe that's too quick unless people want to. Yes, Mr. Brady?
I would agree with David and Chris in part of what Jack said, but I think that should be not ironclad rules of governance. I think that where I strongly agree with my colleague, Mr. Frog, is more of a courtesy, is notifying the chair in case if someone calls me, I'm going to notify the chair that they're looking for something. Because a board is supposed to act as a united body, but they can have disparate views. But when an individual is speaking, they do carry that gravitas as a member of the board, whereas the first perception could be, well, that's what the board thinks. And I think those areas have to be defined, just to speak to Jack's point about speaking to the media. That's all I would say about that. I think there should be some rules, but I also agree that it's basically based a lot on common sense and courtesy, common courtesy to the people that you're working with and to the town as a whole. So they're not getting a view by a certain person, be it me, be it Chris, or Ellen, or Jack, or Dave, that well, that's how the board thinks. That's where I think that we need to find.
There was one oddity in there too. Beyond this, which you go to the MMA Selectments Handbook as well, from the Mass Municipal Association. For some reason, they have an issue with Roberts rules, which I still don't understand what they have with, because we run town meeting based upon Roberts rules. And there's some little thing there. And, you know, as far as I know, that's how we run our meetings with motions and everything like that. And there's no other alternative that I'm aware of that's out there. So there's just little things like that that are, you know, that need to be brushed up, I think, with it, which.
Well, we've agreed, we're going to tweak and individually take a look, but you get at it, you know. I think it's redlining, but I also think that there should be a guide, I mean, setting we're setting a precedent, maybe, but is it going to help future boards?
So, right, exactly. So we'll get the Word version distributed. And I would say you could return it to Chris Senior. And then maybe I'll sit with you. And then maybe I'll sit with you on the red lines and we'll loop in Carolyn so that she can review it against the bylaws. And we'll come back with a second draft. Probably the next meeting is too tight to get that done in two meetings. Is that satisfactory with everybody?
Yes.
That procedure? Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, next is the town manager review process and schedule. And again, this is just a draft, um, for conversation, that's why there's no vote. I sent around, I sent around a couple of examples, the existing, um, the existing form that we used last year. Um, and then there was one and it was titled city manager, which of course we, we would change it. Um, and then, um, I have, I have a few more, but, but they are all kind of similar. And council has recommended a mid-cycle review. The, uh, annual review was not, was not done. At the end of the day, there are only two sitting board members who had contributed to the written, um, process. Although Moore had, had spoken individually with Chris and she felt that it was not, um, it would not be a fair representation, um, to have with, with this new board. So she recommended a mid-cycle review. And, uh, that's what we're going to talk about now. And the process, and again, this is a draft. These are just my thoughts. Anyone is welcome to change, suggest. So each of us complete the evaluation and we sit with the town manager independently to review. The individual evaluations get sent to town council for compilation. Then there's a public presentation of the compilation of the review. It's presented at a public meeting. And no select board member may add verbal commentary during the public review unless they completed part A. I feel very strongly about this. I was in a previous committee where we had a member who refused to, to participate in the written, um, or one-on-one meeting and yet felt, um, entitled to participate in the public meeting and it was not, um, representative of the compilation. I think if it's important enough, people will do it. Um, and then the individual reviews and the final review will be kept in the town manager personnel file. The evaluation per the current town manager contract must be based upon the agreed upon goals and objectives developed jointly by the town manager and the select board. So today, um, I'd like us to talk about the evaluation tool or tools as presented, what we like, what we don't like. November 6th, provide town council with a copy of your evaluation. That gives July, August, September, October, four and a half months, uh, to make assessments. November 6th to 18th, scheduled time with the town manager for individual meetings. And November 19th, we'll have the, um, public compilation evaluation. Mr. Plex?
Is now when we jump into specific feedback on the two different forms of the evaluation?
Sure.
So, uh, of the two forums, I do have a preference for one that is more free forum and allows more narrative discussion of performance. The other forum seems very mathematical and quantitative, which may not be representative of the activity that occurs in the period being reviewed. So, uh, while my preference would be for something that is purely narrative and can describe the actual events of the period being evaluated without concern for things that, uh, an evaluator may consider less relevant. I understand the need for some quantification. So, uh, if it comes down to a choice between these two, I would prefer the one that allows for more free-form description of performance and less strict quantification.
The one titled confidential, Town of Cohasset.
So the one that has city manager?
Yep, city manager, yeah.
Is all numbers and no words?
There, well, there are on, on pages six and seven, there, there is narrative.
I hear you.
Yeah.
But I don't, when it's set up like this, I don't think anybody is going to read the narrative. They're going to look at the numbers.
What if the narrative evaluation was first?
I don't think that changes it.
Changes, okay. Okay.
The narrative is the meat of the evaluation because it, it can be about the individual's experience with the person being evaluated over the period of time being evaluated. Some of these may say, I'm exaggerating to make the point.
Yeah.
Does he keep his desk clean? I don't care.
Right, right.
So the weighting that I may apply to these things and the weighting that is locked into this form may be different. I can communicate that in a narrative. I can't communicate that in something that is rigidly quantitative.
Okay.
I would agree.
I, I was the exact opposite. I, I like the, the city manager one because it did have a narrative section and it had a quantitative section. I found it to be more objective than subjective. Um, the previous one that the, that the board had, I, I thought was, you, you, you have to become your own Ernest Hemingway to evaluate how, how the town manager is doing and create your own adjectives and go grab the thesaurus where, where this one I felt, you know, got to the point on characteristics, policy execution, you know, the categories were there. And then you could write in the narrative section if you want to be more descriptive on things. So I found the city manager wanted to be the better of the two. And when you're trying to do a performance evaluation, there, there has to be some form of objectivity beyond subjectivity. So that was just my thought on.
Just saying, I, I had a couple of others that, well, I have one other. Just, do you want to take a quick look at that?
Could I, um?
Yes, please jump in.
Having done a lot of reviews in my time and then having done this one, uh, which we had as the first.
Yes.
I find kind of a, and I have to agree partly with Dave, but I also agree partly with Chris is, um, I'd have to find this more comprehensive processes that we go out that have your numbers, your ratings and with a little more free form after that, so you can fill it out, um. You know, to a degree, I do. I thought the other process was kind of long, but I do like be able to discuss the points. This is the second one, the city manager, part of it. I like, I like some of the regimentation. I don't like all of it.
Because there's too many factors.
Just too many factors. Like, I agree with Chris, like, does he keep his desk clean? Well, I don't care, you know, um, you know?
Yes.
Is he getting the job done? But, you know, citizen, I'm just looking at citizen relations responsive requests to check. All right, so once, like, say question six, like citizen relation. Are we even just check responsive? Is, is the town manager responsive to requesting citizens? Demonstrates that a check, is that a check, is that a minus, is that a plus? You know, again, are we going on a one to five basis? And so I think you've got to be able to personalize a little bit because I think there's a mix of both in, you know, in any review. And I'm not just, I'm not talking about our town manager. I'm talking any review you want to at least has some form of, um, valuation below that. Or to quantify your answer, see what I'm saying? I do, I mean, this is an easier one to do than the other.
Yeah.
The other ones are free flowing. You could do this and, you know, whatever your numbers, oh, good, I'm done. But I don't think that's a fair assessment of the person. That's all.
Which, which one? The old one?
No, I like, I like a mix of the new and the old.
Yeah.
I just, I think that's allowed to be able to fill out, you know, like response request. I'm going back to that because I'm looking at six, for instance, or staffing. Proton retains competent personnel staff position. Okay, so say we said six. Why'd we say six?
Right, so, so what if?
You go down to the bottom, again, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry. Pull me down to the bottom, then you're going to write a soliloquy on how you came to all the answers above. I just think it's, it's a good, good form to it, I think, but I, I think this one.
Unless the narrative follows every section.
To a degree. It doesn't have to be long, just you, you know, you, you have to be able to fill out. I think it's fair to the person being reviewed. So it's something to discuss. Like, when I do reviews, I let the technician fill out their review. And I fill it out as well, but I'll sit and discuss and go over point to point as to what makes them feel the way they do and what makes me feel the way I do. How do we meet in the middle? How do we make it better? Do we come up with a remedial plan? You know, and so it gives them kind of some skin in the game, which I think is fair to the person themselves. They have skin. It's their livelihood and job. See where I'm going with that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I think maybe a hybrid or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, or have narratives at each section. Because I mean, like I said, I, I do think you need objectivity with some scoring because then everybody is scoring on the same categories. And it's not just, you know, it's not just a, a blanket opinion. They, they have the, the same things to grade on. And I mean, in, in government, generally speaking, you know, most reviews, there's some point system in some way, shape or form on there. There might be narrative sections, but but I mean, it, it, it's, it's almost, I would say exclusively, but mostly, uh, you know, you're scoring on a one to five scale usually, so.
I agree with Mr. Brog. The right solution is some hybrid
Okay.
of the two. The other thing that I would ask is for the quantitative portion of the evaluation, that needs to be sufficiently disaggregated so that one bad review or one bad section doesn't result in the average being thrown off substantially. If Mr. Grady thinks everything is exceptional, I think everything is unsatisfactory. Either one of those could really swing the average unless there was sufficient disaggregation to see, ah, Mr. Grady's just happy and loves everything.
Okay. Let me ask council, I, I understand what you're saying. So let me ask council how that's, how that's handled. You know, do, do you throw out the outliers on either end of the spectrum and then? Okay.
I also, I could add something. I agree wholeheartedly that it, it's an effort that has to be participated by each member of the board. They want to participate publicly, you know, raise a hand, sit down, um, because it's only fair to the town manager and to be, uh, either praised or torn to shreds in a public forum. Some, you know, the person that's doing that did not contribute to the review process individually and, and by the written word.
Okay, so on, on the form, um, I will take a stab at blending the, the best components of, of the two. However, I would like to, to challenge my colleagues, you can find 10,000 city manager, town manager, mayor, you can find so many examples of performance evaluations. I was starting to go a little loopy looking at them all. So, um,
I'll look too.
Yeah. Everybody, I'm, I'm very happy to have everybody look at them, um, and come back with what your favorite might be. I'll put together these two as we've talked about.
Why don't you wait till we come up? You might, we, some, uh, Mr. Plex could look tomorrow and find the perfect review. I could look tomorrow and find the perfect review that's an aggregate of the two.
Okay, then I'll, then I'll wait.
Yeah, so you don't, you don't have to fuss.
I don't need any more work.
Exactly.
That's fine. So, um, okay. All right. Is everybody okay with that plan?
I'm fine.
And we'll come, and we'll come back with the actual form at the next meeting. Okay, um, everybody will bring their, their best, um, their best work product and we'll make a decision at the next meeting. Is the schedule? Is, is the schedule okay with everyone?
I'm fine with it.
As long as the next, within the next month, if we can, you know, come up with the, the right evaluation tool, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we'll make a decision on the evaluation tool at the next meeting.
That does, I suggest after the work for special time, they should be able meetings and stuff, so it should be.
Yeah. I kind of looked at that.
I think it.
Yeah. Yeah, and it give, it gives us enough time in this, this time period. It's not a precise six months, but it's better than doing it.
Just one small observation, and I've been doing this for a while, and I look for the review side too. One of the biggest things that we all do, and I do too administratively tremendously, is town meeting. And it's, it's never, it's not actually ever talked about. It's kind of soon.
This one, sorry?
The town meeting prep, all the work that goes into it, right? There's a tremendous amount of work that goes into that. And then I'm in the middle of it in my office. I mean, literally to the creation of the warrant, all of the other steps. And, um, so it, it just kind of happens, right? And it doesn't just happen. It's a tremendous amount of work. So I just think, yeah, I just think it, it's not, it's never really been thought about. I think because we're such a committee-focused and structured place, and it pushes a lot of, you know, so I, so I think there's, it's something that you should figure out how to quantify. I, just a recommendation.
Especially these last couple of ones.
Yeah. Well, you know, may, maybe that, that's a category of, of it, of its own or, or part of fiscal management. You know, maybe some of these bullet points under fiscal management, it's fiscal management slash town meeting because it's hand in hand. We approve the budget and we spend money at town meeting. So maybe they go hand in hand. Okay.
All right.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate. And if you have any, you know, further questions, you can reach out to me and I will respond if you want to text or call. Um, if you have individual comments, uh, before our next meeting. Okay. And then next on the agenda is sorry, uh, town hall working group. Mr. Grady?
Town hall working. Well, we kicked it off. Chris was there. We met last week here. Ellen, Kane. Pretty good group. Wheeler.
Lydia, Lydia St. Ange.
Lydia St. John.
Meg, Lydia St. Ange.
Glenn Pratt.
Glenn Pratt.
Mark Cameron. Susan Franklin.
Susan Franklin and, uh,
And you.
and me. But we all said a lot of input and that's, and we've got the facilities fellow and I'm going to get
Nick Rorty.
Nick Rorty. So we're
He's coming next.
finalizing the schedules. But we kicked it off. Again, I think we're on hopefully third time's charm. And I can say what we've come up with.
Yeah, yeah.
Working on a plan, hopefully 41 Highland Avenue to perhaps set it over into a nonprofit area, uh, that will open it up for programming. Town will, uh, be able to enjoy all the benefits. Part of it, basically a vibrant community that would be open to voting, open to town events, red carpets, meetings, prom dinners, thing, whatever. It'd open up also to, uh, cultural center, uh, activities. So it's actually a building that's going to be used, we hope, as, uh, as, um, as it should be. Not locked up, closed and falling apart. Also, we're in discussion about whether the annex stays or goes. The general consensus is that we maybe want to work with the annex to see, we have determined town hall needs. Town staffing, figuring out where staff can lie. We have a bunch of things in the mix, like King Street is coming up, dating people, but the general agreement towards it is just making the building something that's usable, it's on the common. Um, it's something people can take some pride in. They're going down the common, but more importantly, it's something they can be used uh, instead of sitting up there like a rotten ark, except for just for the annex. Uh, be the annex if it was decided to keep it, we'd sit up, try to keep the cost down, um. And that's it. So really, it's, it's, we've got the ball. It's in the court. We're moving with it, um, but with the starting off. But, um, so we'll be reporting back as we go. You're welcome to say something too, because you were there and Chris is welcome to say something as well.
Um, I don't know if I have anything new to add. You pretty much, I, I don't, I don't want to repeat what you said, so I'm good.
Iron Man professionally optimistic. So it was a good group. I think it's a good, it was, it was good energy. Uh, and there's a lot of materials. So, you know, uh, I, I, I think people are ready to dig in and, and really make some progress.
So I think the nice thing about it is we're people from different parts, all level of the town right now. Um, we're going to be getting facilities. It's going to show us best practices and uses. We have, um, Meg, we have Mark Cameron, who was key member of the earlier town hall committee iteration. And like me, I was part of the second one. And, um, people that just want to see it done, you know, Glenn, historical component and programming, fundraising, that's with Meg as well, Lydia, uh. I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that we can get something done this time that the town's gonna, you know, um, maybe hopefully sink their teeth into and just approve. But again, there'll be a lot of communication. We'll do what we did with the old town hall. We'll do its forms, much communication, uh, we'll be utilizing Kevin's services frequently as far as getting some videos out. Thing, but first off, we got to come up with a solid concrete plan for it. So again, this is just, uh, uh, baby steps, but it was, it was a good meeting. Felt good about it.
Mr. Brady?
I'm very glad that we're, we're making progress. We've had, uh, three, probably four. I'm very glad that we're, we're making progress, we've had, uh, three, probably four fall starts. We've had contentious votes, we've had things turned down, um, and I think we have number one. Saving forty-one Highland, which is the historic Town Hall, and that's a wonderful part of Cohasset. And it can use, uh, serve a very good purpose, so to the extent we can, um, save that and recycle it. Lot of good arts uses, public uses, prams and all that, will get a lot of support and. Been through a number of, of things and there's been some. Interesting discussions in, in the, in the past and some very, very hard feelings. Um, and it's time for the town to come together and recognize, number one, we don't have unlimited pockets, so we have to be prudent. And number two, we cannot afford, or we do not wish, lose our historic Town Hall, so. Well done, let's keep it up.
On this matter, I was just gonna say, I didn't know if, uh, the chair was gonna be attending all the working group meetings, because there's an opportunity, I would definitely like to attend a couple to. Check it out, because I know unfortunately if it's all three of us and we have to post it or something like that.
Uh, I'm, I'm happy if you would like to go.
Oh, okay, yes, yeah, yeah, just let me know when the next, next one is and I'll definitely be there with Paul.
Twenty, twenty seventh?
Yeah.
The, the twenty seventh.
I think what we're trying to do this time around, or try not to get mired down in detail, look at the picture, you know. Not linear, but to say, what's our best way to get there, now, once we come up with a final. Draft of what we all envision it, and if the town approves, and again, input is gonna be welcomed by the town, so, um. But I think we're, I don't want to use this word fast track assist, but how do we get from A to Z? And what's the best way to get there, and how do we make this place look and be the way it should?
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Um, it's Town Manager update.
Two things on the preserve, do you have the, so, um, Kevin is gonna pass out a, a brand new flyer, uh, a little pamphlet. Uh, which we are distributing, we already have, we've already plugged it into our, uh, our community outreach folks, uh, through our public health grant. Uh, I'm happy to share copies, so you can distribute it live, live for us, the electronic version, which has all the quick links, these have more phone numbers. Because, you know, you can't really click on a page, so, um, but, uh, you know.
Can you have like?
No, so, uh, the QR code does bring you to the town's webpage, but it's, it's a list of resources. Uh, tenant rights, rental housing assistance, and then about safety information on our, uh. We're gonna, we're gonna, so we can print any, uh, any amount of these, and these are all the phone numbers, the version online has all the links. And I think there's a lot of people, it, it, just to help to them, the next piece, um.
May I interrupt you on that? Um, Emery, do you think it would be helpful if we had like fifty copies, could, could they?
Sure.
Okay, because not everybody is electronically, yeah, so, so Chris, if you could, I, I don't know, fifty, seventy-five copies and let. Ms. Young know when they're available, maybe come down and pick them up, thank you.
And then the electronic version have all the literal links, so you can just click and just drop right to them. Um, the next piece, uh, and, uh, select the great, it was on a meeting this week, uh, with Pam Fay. Is a joint meeting with the Board of Health, so it was tentatively scheduled for your next meeting, November, uh, September fourth. To talk about the regulations for the inspection regulations setup, um, so that would be an opportunity to. Have that joint meeting, talk about the regulation, talking, a draft, what they look like going into that. There's, I, I attended the last public health, or public health meeting, and they were, all three members were most certainly interested in doing this, they think it's an important thing to do. Uh, there's more rental problems, because it did not have a lot of rental problems in the past, and now it has a, a critical mass of them. Uh, and as an extra bonus in this, because we're a part of a public health excellence grant, the situ and pay them. And, and our neighbors also have a need for this, we, we should be able to pay for a housing inspector through the grant, so Pam Fay is now working on that aspect. And as, as Paul mentioned earlier, um, we need to, we're gonna look to fund additional software updates, both for tracking issues, you know, um. So that, you know, applications can be made to, to manage the structural program, but also for inspection purposes, so if we have an inspector in the field, they can actually use a tablet. Take pictures and, and have, you know, a much more modern, uh, and, and, uh, documented process, so. We're looking at all of that, so the joint meeting in two weeks will, will take the next big step for, on getting that, that, that program together. Again, this is something the town's never done, right, and, and very few towns of our size have anything like this. Hold us, way with us, some other bigger communities do, that said, in, in the world that we're facing, zoning and, and, and other realities, even to me forty B. Um, there's gonna be a need for more rental housing, uh, and people sometimes rent houses anyway, and it just, it's always happened to some extent. I'm not talking about Airbnb, I'm talking about people that have rented units for extended periods of time. In fact, the state has now passed legislation that effectively makes accessory dwelling units almost automatic and, and pretty much single family zoning all across the state, so. There won't be rates on that coming out until the fall, there'll be a lot more to come on that, um, I think, I think, um, so Cassandra and Planning is looking at that strongly, so. There, there's gonna be more of a need, and we actually now have the resources to fund it, the program will have fees, so the, you know, the owners of, of, of units will have to pay that to that. But we actually have funding to help support the inspector and the program, we may be able to come into special time and to get funding as needed to do software purchase if that, if that needs to be done. Uh, and, uh, and again, I think that, that getting that, that base plan, which, yeah, we're not coming out of full cloth, right? It's being modeled on other communities that have successful programs, and that we actually have our public health just ran the program at home, so she's actually has firsthand experience, so. And again, it's about, to be clear, it's about health and safety, right, that's, that's, that's what, that's what our, that's, that's our wheelhouse, it's health and safety. So that's all coming up, so that's, I think, I think that's a, it's a big step, we've gone from like zero to sixty on this, and, uh, it will make a big difference, uh.
Could you also mention what we talked about, about segregating the.
Right, so, so what's also, what's also something that we just haven't really delved into ever. Is, is how do you manage the affordable piece, right, how, how do you, what kind of watchdog eyes, what, what authority you have it? So I've asked Cassandra to talk to our neighbors, and no one else has any idea either, no one's really, you know, it's like, well, how do you do that, and because it's never. It's, it's not an issue until it becomes an issue, and then it's like, oh, people aren't doing the right thing, how do we, how do we deal with it? Well, M A P C is working on something, so that, that's good, they're working on a best practice guy, the problem is that their best practice guy is not due out until the spring. Uh, so it's good that they're working on it, at the same time, I think we need to do our own, we should continue to work on, how do we, how do we, um, manage that? So one of the things, one of the things that a rental program will do, will get us hard evidence about what units are where and, and what kind of condition, right? So it's, it's, it doesn't have to be, I mean, tenant, tenant input's huge, right, at the same time, it doesn't have to be based just on, it'll be a third party, and by the way, the tenants. Don't have to have any hands on this, right, the town is getting the inspections, so it's not like anyone is, you know, uh, you know. Informing on anybody, though people have the right to do that and, and share, it, it, it'll be the government, a formal program, will have data that has nothing to do, it's not tied back to any individual, so that. Then nobody, no landlord should go say, you told them stuff, no, the town went in there and did its job, right, so, uh, it gives a buffer to, to, to tenants. And they'll be able to say, well, something doesn't look right here in a second, I'm making this up, right? It's like unit one oh one, it has like the old appliances and, and, and it seems like every time it's turned over, because the inspection protocol conversation has been. Annually plus turnover, not just one or the other, but so if it turns, that way, the minute it turns up, we'll know if it's up to standard, so that's. Because what, if, if it's up to standard, somebody moves in, how do you fix it, and how do the people moving in even know that it's up to standard, right, so, um. And when I say standards, I'm talking about health and safety, right, but we also will have a benchmark, is what's there, right? And, and we'll be able to start gathering data and, and, and saying, hey, this doesn't look right. And at the same time, we're gonna try to get best practice together with our colleagues, because the, the forty, forty B affordable housing is a state mandate, right? Well, the state is, is to support us and making sure that it's being done right too, right? So they have this great purr where they make us do this, which is, by the way, really important, then they need to help us out, so how do we make sure the landlords are fulfilling narrative of the market? And, and. This is something, we, 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 obviously, we don't want people to be retaliated against, that's absolutely not okay, it's zero, zero tolerance. And also, we want to make sure that units are being, um, um, appropriate and appropriate, you know, that, that it's, it's not building one is the affordable. There are fifty-five units and they float, now, maybe it's not the, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be the penthouse that, like. Complex I live in, they're upgrading some units to, with ridiculous marble and, and architectural panels, and it's gotta be over four thousand.
I do know that the preserve, sorry to interrupt.
No, no.
The preserve did, when they built it, Avalon built it, there is no differentiation, all right, so they can't take. Unit A, and say, we're gonna put granite counters in here, and then move unaffordable, uh, uh, some of those, you know. Utilize them for like, they, they, you're allowed to do it, but they are not covered, they're not granted, they side away from that.
And what, well, so what, what's also, the, the, the agreement that we have doesn't, it says the units supposed to float, right, but it doesn't specify the, it doesn't, you know. Things have changed, the market's changed in twenty years too, right, luxury hat, uh, uh, unit, there, there's a, a luxury market for apartments too, that, that's not just in Boston anymore. And at the same time, the units are, we're supposed to have guaranteed affordable units, and so. There, there has to be a, a meeting place here, right, to make sure that people have, again. We're starting, we're moving, and again, I really appreciate all the input that we're getting from residents, uh, and, and we're also trying to get a program together on that aspect. So it's actually gonna be a lot easier to do safety, because there's protocols, there's, there's, there's models. We're not finding any models for how do you assure that the affordable, that the company, the landlord or the, the, the developer and, and the successors, because that, that runs with the land. Are following the spirit, right, and, and the spirit of the agreement, and sometimes the literal parts of it, because we don't have, there's no penalty, we don't have, the agreement doesn't have any penalty, we don't have any penalty. Um, and, you know, you, so, so at, at the same time, we have regulatory requirements, so we're trying to figure them out, so it's ongoing.
Maybe at the next meeting, if we have, we'll maybe invite Joan, um.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, uh, Joan, I know since you're having some things and working with affordable housing to come up with some solutions that may be interim. Thing this, hopefully some legislation could be filed that would hold on any changes until we finalize these programs.
I under, I've been written in here for a while.
Oh, just tap me, I'm sorry, I was listening to Mr. Senior.
My understanding, and I was involved when these things were first developed some thirty years ago. In Boston, when you're building things and, you know, when you have the whole concept of affordable housing. And air, uh, units reserve is that one of the things that you were not allowed to do, and you're not supposed to be allowed to do, was to cherry pick. So if it turns over, it turns over, but you can't say, all right, all, all, all the lesser divi, you know. Basement units, if, if you will, go to our affordable component, it was supposed to be, um, well balanced. I don't know why our agreement didn't incorporate that, because it was kind of state of the art of when that happened. You know, twenty years ago, um, but I do know that was the, the principles back then, and it should have been incorporated. Um, and they should have known that they can't do that, I mean, I could see the. Property manager on site saying, I can up my overall revenue and move the affordable units over here, but it's supposed to be a fair representation of all the units, you cannot cherry pick. And I'm very, quite honestly, um, you, you know, puzzled that nobody's been able to go back in there and find all those original agreements. And I know that was public policy when the whole concept of allowing developments who would not otherwise be allowed. Allowing them on the basis of a certain percentage would be affordable. Uh, there's a whole thing, and one of the central, um, tenants for that is you can't do this. So I'm disappointed, it's of all these organizations on the state level that's supposed to be protecting our housing, they don't have a policy on that, so.
Mr. Grady?
Well, that's, we did at our meeting dug into the other day, is that it is not illegal, they can set up different sets of units. In the Avalon's case, they did not raise that case, they're supposed to be levelly built, occupiable units, no differentiation. So that is in the agreement, which we do have, I just want to, you know.
Is that in the Avalon agreement?
That's in the Avalon agreement, where it was built, yep.
That was my understanding.
You're absolutely right, you're spot on on that, and.
To hold them to their contract.
That's what we're looking to do.
I just want to expound on one point.
Yes, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
With what Chris had mentioned regarding, what he was talking about at one point, if it was the Housing Bond Bill, which just came out, it was passed. Uh, by the legislature and the governor, one of the pieces in there for everybody to understand is that it's gonna make accessory dwelling units. Uh, almost as of right and, like, properties, and any enunciate it, but I just want to expound on that. So when we were looking at not only what's going on in the preserve, but if you're looking at rental units in general, the, the game has changed below our feet. And so we're gonna have to, uh, be able to, you know, meet, meet the moment on this issue and be able to look in with the Board of Health and deal with the regulations that are gonna be able to. Uh, sufficiently deal with that fact that's gonna be coming here in the fall and thereafter, and it's also a point of public safety, talk about other units maybe in town. Whereas the fire department needs to know, uh, if there's any rental units in town, if there should be a fire, they need to know is there a basement apartment, a, a apartment in the attic? An apartment, uh, that's above the, the garage, uh, so if there's a fire call, they know, uh, how many people could potentially be where they're going to be. Uh, and, and not, and have those expectations going in, so, uh, for, for all those reasons and more, you know, we're, we're just gonna have to. Deal, deal with as a town and, and work on this subject, because the game has changed, and we're gonna have to change to deal with it.
Good points, thank you, yes, Ms. Young?
Could you use the microphone, please, because people at home can't hear you.
So what I wanted to say, excuse me, um, should I say where I am again?
Yes, please.
My name is Anne Marie Young and I live at the Preservative Cohasset, um, what I wanted to say is, um. First of all, the four oh three B people, you know, um, and I'm speaking very generally, you know, um. The concept of getting into a unit, especially in Cohasset, it, the people are very grateful, they're not going in, they're going, gee, I want the granite countertops and the, the. You know, so what, what has happened is, the Avalon was fine, even with the water bills and the actual units. It wasn't until the preserve purchased that the water bill complaints went through the roof, and then they started moving people from. That were able to afford market into affordable housing units and units that were the same as the very day they built those units. So they're keeping some of these units and they're throwing, they're not upgrading them at all, they're slapping paint and, and I think I've said this before. So my point is, is that they're getting very brazen, the preserve, not Avalon, uh, and I've had conversations with many of my neighbors. Everybody was happy when it was Avalon, it's, there's a climate, there's a, there's a, there's a temperament and a climate at the top. That I, we're all starting to feel, and, you know, taking, uh, there's two people that I know of that were moved. From a market value unit, which was nice, into a substandard unit, people aren't going in, and I want to make that very clear. That people aren't going in going, well, Joe Schmo has, you know, the white, the new white and the gray cabinets, that's not a big deal. We just want to live in clean, like, I'm, I feel like we live in sick buildings, there's water, a lot of water damage, the roofing's substandard, the roof. Flies off all the time at the, we're up high, so we get a lot of water damage, we lose roofing, and so. The buildings are suffering as a result of it, there's a lot of water damage, as I've said before, and so it's. This is a smaller component of that, moving people into, it's just a numbers game with whoever bought this place, I mean, we all know who did, but. So I just want to make that clear, I, I don't want you thinking that four oh three people, people that come in are going, you know, I want what they have, yeah. I want to make that really clear.
There's no implication.
Okay.
Trying to establish a constant that when it was built.
Yeah.
Right, what they do for improvements, I think we're splitting hairs, that, that, that are complex handles, right? They may say, you know, it's on a rotational schedule, they can say whatever they want, but we're saying that, no one can say, we're moving Anne Marie to that one, all right? That's what we're getting at.
Okay, I have one friend that is afraid to come here because of legal bills and. Okay, I have one friend that is afraid to come here because of legal bills and retaliation. Her fiance lost his job, it happens. They moved her from a market value because they both could afford it into a building, a three-floor building. The floors are puckered, I'm assuming from water damage. So it's, again, it's, I don't know, which is worse at this point? Do we address the toxicity of the buildings first, and then the other behavior after?
Your safety and security in my opinion is first.
Exactly.
Health, safety, so that's the word to try and.
So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you for letting me speak again.
Sure, thank you.
Oh, sure.
Wait for the next segment, but that's okay.
Okay, okay.
I could just point something out, by the way, this is a classic example of a new landlord coming in. I understand, I don't have any knowledge of this particular landlord, but very, very large landlord, they come in and they buy something and they realize that there are issues they weren't aware of, and they can either catch up, but they have to abide by all the rules and regulations, and they have to abide by the health department, and you just haul them in and you sign them. And if that, as Mr. Brady pointed out, that agreement is in the enforcement, and that can be enforced. But just don't give up, and I think to the extent the town, on the basis of the authorities that we have for health, we could say, hey, guys, it's not working. I suspect that you're probably more closer there than you want. I look at these guys, and I know a lot of very responsible people in the business. And, you know, you just shake your heads at these guys, kind of guys that come in and do that because they make it number one tougher for the legitimate players, and most of them are, or they wouldn't be in business. But sooner or later, it's going to blow up in their face.
Great, thank you. Mr. Senior, anything else in the town manager update? No, select board comments, Mr. Farag?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, please.
If I may, I'd have stated, I didn't want to read into the record for everybody. It's brief, but nevertheless, it would be better if I wrote it out first. I wanted to comment on the selection of the Director of the Owner Affairs, which has been the issue of recent controversy. After my personal review of the process today, there were a few issues that I have regarding the selection process. First, it is my understanding that the job description did not include experience within a senior center, but rather focused on skill sets. Now, it must be understood that posting this position or any other for the Town of Cohasset has some current limitations. Namely, we are a small town, and the salary that we can command is less than that of bigger towns. Towns such as Waymouth, in which the salary is ninety-nine thousand per year, and Duxbury, which is a hundred and three thousand per year respectively, for this light position. Our listing for this position, to my knowledge, was listed in the eighty thousand dollar range. Additionally, some towns are better geographically centered, which can draw from a bigger population. Moreover, the cost of living is in this immediate area is also an inherent barrier to the search for many candidates. But even with these limitations, having the experience of working in or administering in a senior center should have been listed as a desired skill or experience. Another issue in the search process is the limitation in participation of the Elder Affairs Board and the senior citizen population of the Town of Cohasset. Approximately thirty percent of the population of Cohasset is under the age of eighteen, and most that attend the Quest Schools at some point in life, even if they go to private schools. When we hire a superintendent in town, there is a very public process in which the school committee was the ultimate responsibility for the hire, as well as the school affiliated groups such as the PSO, Cohasset Educated Caution Foundation, and other members participate in forums meeting the candidates, et cetera. Even student leaders and students are allowed to be a part of the public process. People of the age of forty-five plus in the Town of Cohasset make up over forty-seven percent of the population, with sixty percent of the population over the age of sixty-five. Why shouldn't this segment of our population be allowed to be a part of the process of hiring the Elder Affairs Director, who is in charge of the services that they either currently have or will be having in the near future? For those who be watching at home, this particular hire for the Elder Affairs Director, as per the Town of Cohasset Town Manager Act, lies solely in the authority of the Town Manager to hire, with no particular process codified or stated in the Act or in the internal HR policies of the town. This process needs to be overhauled. Beyond the process itself, one of the most important tenets as a manager in hiring a director position is to make sure that they are put in a position with the resources and the fit to carry out the duties and to be put in a winning position to start their tenure. In this case, our new director is not in a winning position and is coming into an adversarial situation, which does not benefit either the new director or our senior population. It was an unwanted and unnecessary situation that was created. Personally, I have a background in government, having attained a bachelor's degree in political science from Northeastern, master's degree in public administration with a concentration in state and local government from the Sawyer School Management at Suffolk University, a law degree at Suffolk University, and an executive certificate from the Harvard Kennedy School. Currently, I work in government for the past nine years and have practiced as an attorney in private practice for over fifteen. In addition, I teach government in the master's degree program at Suffolk in the areas of workplace and labor law, public administration law, or administrative law, excuse me, and nonprofit law and ethics. I have spent my career studying, applying, and advocating for the principles of good government and effective governance. Based upon the knowledge I have attained and the experience in government, the current process is inadequate and needs to be changed, amended, and/or enhanced. Based upon my knowledge of the situation, whether it is changing the Town Manager Act to elevate the decision-making process for this position and any others to the Select Board and/or updating the Town Manager HR policies. For the future, I'm open to facilitate this conversation and change for the best in this Town of Cohasset. While there are pluses and minuses to each of these changes and possibly other avenues, our senior population as citizens and through its appointed Elder Affairs Board should have their voices elevated in this process. I didn't ask for this oral or situation to arise, but I'm certainly going to do whatever it is within my power to approve our hiring process for the benefit of the town and the citizens of Cohasset. Thank you.
It's great.
Yeah, is this working? Well said. I too have followed this situation with the seniors with increasing levels of concern. I do think that we need to figure out a much better way to handling the hiring of top echelon. The model is what we do for the police chief. We do with the fire chief. It's not that long ago that we had to override the town manager's decision on the fire department and insist that a truly qualified candidate get that job. The responsiveness that I have received when I have asked for records of hiring going back, I wanted to see how many people have been hired, what their salaries were, what the turnover is. I think that we have some very serious problems. I think we need to have a whole level of people that require the Select Board to approve the hiring manager. And I urge this Select Board to move very quickly in that direction. Don't think we need to get mired down in all kinds of various long-winded discussions. We need to get to some common sense reforms. I believe that we have to go through the state. There is a process, but, you know, you don't get to the end of the road till we start. And I urge my fellow Select Board members to move quickly to establish a better hiring process and also to have the senior positions in town government also have to be vetted by the Select Board. Because after all, we are, as a Select Board, your ultimate way in which the voters exercise their power. Thank you.
Thanks. I just have two comments. One, the MSBA will be doing a site visit at the Joseph Osgood School on August twenty-third at nine AM, which is good news. They went through a virtual meeting with all parties involved at Osgood. The roof is up for repair, we've made an application for state reimbursement for the roof, and the fact that they're coming is very good. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that we can re-roof the Osgood School and keep it maintained the way it is. The second comment I have is regarding asset management. It's one of our goals that we set forth. I had a preliminary meeting with Nick Berardi, our Director of Facilities, and Brian Joyce, our Director of DPW, and Mr. Senior. And I just wanted to explain to them about the goal that we had, and it wasn't to usurp what they do and how well that they do it, but to support them, support them with visibility. In fact, we talked about having them come and do presentations on all the projects that they have completed this year on the seventeenth of September. Much of what they do, you don't see, especially with facilities. So I think it's really important to get out there, to show people that the money they vote on at town meeting and special town meeting and capital budgets, how it's spent and what the result is. And then also, following up, we will be crafting a budget message for FY twenty-six sometime this fall. And we can support our goal with our budget and incorporating additional funding for facilities as the directors see fit. So that's all I wanted to comment on, update.
So just one comment from me tonight, I had a couple of conversations with folks in the community this week. The disturbing trend, though, was that there is a lot of misinformation out there. So people were getting information from Facebook, they were getting it from a website out there that is very clear that it's all written by AI, and there is no journalist and no editor, it's an AI-driven website. And this is the kind of thing that's being passed around in the discussions of current events right here in Cohasset. So what I would ask is just for us on the Select Board and also for the folks at home, all six of you, is when we're in these conversations, just make sure that we're making sure the facts that we're working from are actually facts and not just something we heard or something we picked up from, God forbid, an AI-generated website. We've got plenty to be wound up about, plenty of work to do. We don't need misinformation, making it that much harder to understand each other and communicate about what's going on so that we can ultimately move forward, make progress, and get past the things that are challenging us at the moment. So that's my statement for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. Okay, is that it?
Mine's pretty simple.
Okay, go ahead.
I second what Chris was saying, is that, you know, mistakes are made, processes can be flawed. But to keep reliving and reliving it, what you do is you correct it, in case over this past hire, I hope that everybody welcomes this person aboard. And hopefully, in a few weeks' time, that we're collaboratively in our Elder Affairs and World Conference benefits for it. That'd be my thought, and that was the thought that was left at the meeting that we had, that joined with Elder Affairs is, at the end of the day, that we're going to welcome this person aboard, but things keep getting brought up and brought up, brought up. And I think at that table, just so the town knows, again, all six and all ten, that processes can be flawed, and they can be corrected, and they can be fixed. But I think trying to do the same thing over and over again and look for a different result is, again, the definition of insanity. So what we do is we try to affect change. What I could say tonight is we have affected some positive change, maybe slow, but we're working with the preserve, trying to get what we can get done, done. Does it frustrate a few folks, undoubtedly, just as much so for us, I can assure you. Because we'd like to put it behind us and get done, and just have a happy community. I'm pleased about Town Hall, on the other hand, I'm frustrated in the last two iterations that that's not done yet. So again, everything here in this place is a work in progress. But we're not going to get it done by arguing, belittling people, looking for flaws. We're going to get it done by working together, and that's just how I would leave it at that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, approval of minutes for August sixth, two thousand twenty-four, do I have a motion?
Yes, made, seconded, so.
Mr. Brady made the motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Flex seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. There are no topics, not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours, so may I have a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-four PM, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, second, Mr. Brady. Thank you very much, everybody. If you have any items you want on the agenda, we'll be meeting next Tuesday morning for our agenda for September fourth.